Here.
Put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to consult.
Second, motion second on favor.
Aye.
Public input that's stuck in place for something that's not on the agenda, with a time limit of three minutes each. This is going to be a discussion, possible action, in reference to school partly is contract review.
Alright, so we have a meeting with the head of maintenance and the activities director of the school to go over some of this. Basically, the whole feeling with this is that this is gonna change drastically potentially once the whole sports complex gets put in, even as soon as the two new diamonds get in. So, I don't know if you guys had any inputs or feelings on it. We did go and change the things that we talked about, pretty much like the money and all that stuff stayed the same. We made the agreement effective the first day of May. The term of the agreement, it ended, the current one was in 2027. But basically, it kind of renewed every year, but the language of this one was done in 27. We feel that it's probably gonna need change prior to that, so we just said it's gonna renew each year unless changes are requested by the school or cities. And then that we're gonna agree to go over this annually each year. And the only other changes were to remove a lot of the things that were no longer placed. So before, we utilized the old practice field. Do you remember when the diamonds were down on the practice field? And we had a storage shed out there and everything was in relation to that.
Just saying you add bus parking and all that stuff, and we don't use the school anymore, so we just took that stuff.
And then we, obviously, I mean, the girl's name was still on here, so we just changed that. So, I didn't know if you guys had a chance to look at it, or if there was any glaring need. I don't know that it, I didn't feel it with potential major changes coming in the future. Now is the right time to do a full redo of this, or if there was discerned questions.
One thing I did see, so the Doris Mackmill scoreboard. That's a big question mark to all of us, because it was under the, when they put that up, it was under the agreement that if they left, that automatically stayed.
See, and in there, it says that they take it, so I was confused on that too.
Anything that stays, because I mean, I don't have any idea, was it all of this?
I have no idea. I would assume, well, it wasn't the one very similar to the baseball field, I wanna say.
Yeah, it was.
Pretty much the exact same. But I mean, I know I was on, and maybe John would've been on, Nate would've been on probably when we agreed to that. I don't, yeah, I don't know why that was, I mean, I'm just trying to find that spot. We're trying to stop that.
That's on the last page or whatever.
So, all the softball field, you know, they have to be out there then?
No, 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 no.
That, no.
Anyway, they installed this at the park, it becomes city property and stays at the park.
The Doris Mackmill donated some money, and they did a new scoreboard for the softball. And when they did, it was under the agreement they could put it in, but once it was put in, it stayed property. It stayed, it's property of the city. Just like the fire department, the fire department buys something out of their, out of their money. They, you know, it makes it become part of the city.
And that's what I thought too. I thought that the scoreboard that they could keep was the one that was in there prior to the one that they just put in. And it sounds like they put that new one in quite a while, you know, which I thought it was more recent, but.
The one that for Doris?
The new one now.
Yeah.
Or just look up when she died.
It's been struggling. Because I know the contract was put together in 2018, and that's been in the contract since then. About the scoreboard, if they get to take that scoreboard, if something happened.
You know where that's at on here?
I don't know. Find it didn't, I did the find, and I can't, that that didn't work.
The only thing nice.
Where it says to keep, they can take it?
It's got its own line on there.
Yeah, it's got its own line, it's.
I see maintenance. The school shall be responsible for any repairs or maintenance associated with electronic scoreboards during the terms of this agreement.
Oh, there is an ad, I just read it.
It has it on page even.
It's on, so it's under fixtures, it's E, under fixtures.
What comes to that?
Existing, yeah.
Excluded from the paragraph in school, maybe the scoreboard at its expense.
See, I thought they had to come, Doug, and get the permission from council, because otherwise, they weren't gonna, you know, place that if they couldn't do it. I thought that's what they asked them.
But I think, we agreed to it, but we, they also agreed that if it was placed, it stays there. I want.
But they're not, they're going to retain where they are.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure they're there anyways, but.
I don't think there's any danger that the clause is gonna get used. It's under the terms of this next agreement.
So that was brought up, just the questions about it, no feelings one way or the other, but I wasn't here for that. I wasn't sure, and neither were the rest of us, so.
She died in 2016. I can look back through the minutes tomorrow, see if there was something that made.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it. If they wanna build a new, and use an old scoreboard, they can use that, take that one and put it in their scoreboard. I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
I mean, once it was missed, if it was in here, everybody agreed to that language, but I don't.
Well, I would've thought, was scared of, it would've been that way at the time, I mean, there was no. So, are they, why did the question come up? Are they, why?
Why is this important at all?
That's how we were instructed, I don't know who, what.
Because they, they just wanted to come. Because I think that's a school.
It comes into effect in May, so.
I think that, not school, I think Mackmill's bought it, bought the scoreboard, right?
Yeah. And Bunny has done ninety-nine point nine percent all work on the girls.
He can.
You know, and that's the way we just always go out.
I mean, I don't, I don't care, but I think it was the last school, was it the last school board meeting we were instructed to go over this?
Yeah, and I brought it up that we probably didn't go over it, because there's a lot of stuff that needed to be taken out.
I don't, I don't have any problem with it, just if one's taken out, one's replaced with it. If they take that, they put all of them back in, whatever, every day just, yeah, stripped.
Yeah, if they wish to take that one, they have to replace.
Are they gonna move?
Okay, let's say they build a new sports complex.
Hey, we just, we just passed something about them doing something to that scoreboard, was there any verbiage in that? Sometimes renaming it. It was renaming it, the sign would stay with the scoreboard, right?
It was Miller Park and Park.
Yeah.
Lots of fun and field and a little park.
But it was gonna, that sign was gonna go on the scoreboard.
It is gonna go on the scoreboard, yeah.
What's the other ones? What, the doors?
Right.
Yeah, there's others.
But I'm almost certain that they said that it was, they're naming the park and that's.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with the.
No, but it does, because I'm pretty sure in the verbiage that they stated that this sign would just stay on the scoreboard regardless of what happens. I, I don't remember clearly, but there's something to that extent that, which would mean the scoreboard stays regardless if they terminate the contract or not.
Well, I know that they took a scoreboard down when they put this up, so I can add language that's to E. That says the school, if this is, if the existing scoreboard is taken down, the school will pay to get a.
Replace.
Or they have to, they have to come to council for permission to take it. Everything that they've put into the park is the property of the city, including the scoreboard. That's the way it's always been since I've been on council.
Yeah.
I don't know how they can piecemeal portions of this out of that standard procedure.
I'm trying to think, I think, is that about the one thing over there that is?
All the press boxes.
Well, that Carrot Club Memorial Press Box was put up, but I don't, again, I don't, I don't know how they.
City property.
Correct, but I don't know how the.
Well, do they, are they not completely moving?
No. No.
So why are we, so why are we questioning it?
We're questioning, because this is the contract that is going to go in effect May first with the school, and this contract is five plus years old, so it needs to be redone, because there was stuff in there from when the school, or when the city still was using the practice football field over at the school. It need to be revised and updated.
It also has to do with the use of the basketball facilities at the school during park and rec.
Mm-hmm.
Things. That's what it is. It's a shared facilities agreement between the bus borrowing, the basketball courts, and them using the stadium.
We just go through and make sure that they're doing their part, we're doing our part. We'll go over there here in a couple weeks, take a lap with them to make sure that everything is, you know, document how everything looks, what it looks like, so we get it back in the same condition.
I know you have to worry until Bunny retires, it'll look pretty fine.
Very soon. It doesn't have anything to do with the fields, it has to do with the scoreboard. If they, when you die, you donate all your money to the school, and they buy a bunch of land and do a sports complex, they wanna take that out of there. We don't have a problem with that, just replace it.
I was just thinking more of a book that I would donate.
But, I know, I know one of the reasons we got this agreement was, we're having problems with. School is always first, no matter if it was at the park or if it was at school, and that's why it changed, so. I mean, that was the only thing I seen in there, and I mean, you could write it up somehow, you know, to where. If that is taken, it is replaced by the school at their cost. And you can do the same thing with, same thing with the scoreboard, the press box, whatever. If it's school, anything the school takes from the city park is replaced.
The only thing that's excluded from over there right now, according to this, is the scoreboard.
Anything the school takes from that park, they replace that at the park.
At their cost.
At their cost.
So, is everyone comfortable if I add to this E? If the scoreboard is taken, the school must replace with a different electronic scoreboard?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Is there any other questions, questions or concerns?
I mean, I think that, like you said, there's gonna be some major changes, and since this is just gonna be from this year, basically, you know, one thing that I'd like to see is that pay for their own electricity and water come next year, just because we'll have our own. We'll have our own water and electricity, our own.
They do, they do pay for electricity. I mean, they're paying ten thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, but electricity is listed separately from that. We pay water and electricity.
Yeah, and it comes a little bit over four thousand, forty-five hundred. So, I mean, the rental fee of five thousand pretty much pays for the water and the water and electrical, and you get a five thousand maintenance.
But we should be making money off of this. We shouldn't just sit here and not make any money. That, I guess that's my opinion, when you rent something, it's profit. And I understand, I mean, there's five thousand to maintenance, there's five thousand to rent, and we are paying water and electricity. And when they're running their sprinklers over there constantly, that's on us. And I, and I feel like, once we have this park up and running, we're paying water and electricity there. There is no reason that they can't pay water and electricity the next year.
The reason it's a shared facilities agreement is because we use their bathrooms and their janitorial services when we use the building and gyms in the winter time.
Do we get charged for any of that stuff?
No, we do not.
No.
Yeah, but we're not running sprinklers.
Believe me, I'm not advocating for the school here necessarily. I don't disagree that we have a very valuable park which we rented out at very low cost, but we don't have.
That's not the principle.
We don't have a basketball.
So, the discussion we had the other day was, I think the intent is to go like a long-term lease or like a three sixty-five lease, and I think that is when you start talking about, you know, I think the, if that's the case of a three sixty-five lease, we talked about, okay, we're gonna throw a number out there for the first year, and then we're gonna have to keep track of every single item that is spent, water.
Yep, exactly.
Everything down to the penny, and then essentially, that would be the new number the following year. And we just have to keep itemizing it that way, or figure something out. So that way, we knew how much the lengths were, you know, because all that's gonna vary.
Yeah.
Last year's Waterville was probably hot. This year, if it rains every three days, we may not even have a Waterville. So there's all different kinds of things, and it's gonna vary.
I think at one time, this arrangement, we read the meters for the electrical, and they paid them. I mean, I'm talking eight years ago when I was on park and rec, before I was on council. We read, we had the meters read, they took over paying for a one hundred percent electrical. We read the water meter, they paid one hundred percent of the value of the water.
And I will say, those old lights, those were pretty crazy.
They, they used to be the run, you're right. These are far more efficient now, so that cost has gone down considerably. And I do not, please don't misconstrue that I'm advocating for the school, just this is how this arrangement came about was trying to come up with an echo way to use the gym facilities, and they get to use the park facilities. They can't afford a park.
Because it was always school first, aren't they, you know, it was always ads party for baseball, football. And that's great if you get kicked out of for somebody else's A U T.
I just know that with one of, we had a situation a couple years ago where the sprinkler system needed to be replaced. Travis, do you remember this? And it was over ten thousand dollars.
Oh, yes.
And we, and we forked out that entire amount because they chose not to.
You're right.
So, my thing is, is that the maintenance can be a lot higher than five thousand dollars that they're giving us.
Yeah.
I mean, there are certain things over there that can obviously take a whole lot more cash than what we, that we don't use, you know? I mean, we're not using the facility.
Preach.
So, I mean, that's the thing that I'm looking at and thinking, okay, you know, where can the city do better? And like, I think Brandon's got the right idea. We need to keep track of what exactly we're spending on electricity over there, exactly what we're spending on water over there. Yeah, it's gonna be different, but this will give us much better idea, is what we're charging them too low? I mean, yes, I understand it's a shared agreement, we can use the gyms. We're not using the gyms every day. They're practicing over here, they're, they're using that every single day.
Good, that's a good point. How many months do we use the gyms?
Um, three, roughly, one and a half for girls and one and a half for boys.
And they're going May, June, July, pretty much for baseball, so it's about three months and three months.
Correct.
But they're not practicing every day at the gyms, right?
Correct.
Well, they practice through the week.
Two days.
They schedule time.
Two nights a week and Saturdays.
Sure.
So, the three days compared to almost, it's pretty much six days a week.
And they're logging the field seven days a week, if necessary, so I see your side of it. I'm not against it, please.
No, I know, I just think the city needs to do their due diligence to make sure that we're charging the accurate amount.
And this, this ten thousand dollars, used to be nothing. We used to spend right for nothing.
Right.
One thing to remember.
Yes, a dollar, you're right.
One thing to remember too is, some of this, since we're still using it, so we have a lot of very double seed fertilizing, but we do recoup some of that. We got flag football, we have soccer, that, we may not, I would assume we probably do some sort of weed feed or just, you know, so we don't have a bunch of gang lines up there, but I don't think we would go to the degree we do, but there's also a program. So then, when we stop paying that, then the school takes, you know, the grub, and then the maintenance and sort of, so then they do kick in, you know, when they start, so.
Yeah.
Like I said, I think right now, this is kinda bare bones, and that's why I said, I didn't wanna upset the apple cart with this one, because in like two years, this could be completely gutted and completely redone.
That's why I said next year, I would like to see it, because we'll have our own electricity and own water that we'll be paying on this, our own field at that point.
Well, I don't look for us to be over here or tell, at least next spring.
That's why I said next year.
You know, I mean, maybe you put something in the maintenance fee that if it goes over, that, you know, that we still agree to pay the water and electrical, all water and electrical, but if there's something major and it goes over five thousand, it's split fifty-fifty.
Yeah, that's tough for the school to budget for, I mean, that's.
Tough for us to budget for.
Oh, I know, I know, but.
Well, I think what the deal comes down to is, I mean, yeah, we could have something, you know, something happen over there, but I think the only big expense over there would be the sprinkler, right, for some apple tussism. So then at that point, you can decide, it's yours, you can decide not to fix it.
Right.
So that, I mean, you don't have to fix it.
That, that's how we can control that budget.
Correct.
And if it's important enough to the school, they can.
Because at the end of the day, our spring soccer and fall flag football, while it's hard as a rock out there, it's probably not, you know, we're not out there in August, you know, so. But that's, you know, hopefully, we can live it along, or it works fine for the next couple of years, or at least this year and the part of next.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I do not have a problem doing year to year, right, one every year. I mean, I think, I think that is a good idea. The only thing, like, the only thing I was thinking was the rental, putting the scoreboard, that I wanted to make sure that it be replaced.
If they moved to a different facility, I'm not sure that that.
I don't know.
That facility requires an electronic scoreboard.
They would take that because of Doris Mackmill, that's who donated that.
Yeah.
So they would take that scoreboard.
That sentimental value is what's driving this.
You have one other issue. Last year, I think we got into a little bit of it, but there were, there were teams that we didn't have a clue show up and start playing on that, with no permission, no advance warning.
And I.
They know, they all got kicked back off, but they all got kicked back off, but I saw girls there that, they, they came in and were told they could not play on that diamond.
Who were they told they couldn't play with?
The school, the school.
No, they weren't affiliated with the school.
There's a semi game, and somebody from the school told they couldn't be on the fields.
Well, I mean, I guess the other.
But there's a, as we well know, there's a real premium for baseball softball fields.
There's a bunch of kids that are playing the semi game.
Was that during?
I think it was after, well, it seemed to me it was last year that I remember them getting kicked off, but they didn't have permission because.
I would say if it's all within this, they have that right.
The school has the right to get people off the city park field?
I would say so.
I remember what you're talking about, and I thought we came to the agreement that they couldn't, because they didn't have anything planned there that.
There was nothing planned, they had no ways to kick people off.
Yeah.
If they don't have. Oh, yeah, I get that, but if Bob wants to vote practice and the kids out there.
Then he's got.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking, I'm not.
That's what that arrangement's for, so he can use it when it's scheduled.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that field is off limits when there's no, like, on a Sunday.
They do, they do, I talked about it, but.
I never heard anything about that situation, so I'd be curious to hear what that's all about.
If they wanna kick people off, the price for the field's two million dollars, and they can pay the city for that.
Well, let's get, let's get the council in on that.
You upped the budget.
There were, there were uniformed girls on that field one day last summer that weren't supposed to be, that didn't have, they just blew in there.
Then that happened, that has happened more than once, because I know, I know my kids were younger when it happened also. I mean, it wasn't within last year, it happened.
I was thinking it was last year.
Then Reese went in there and kicked them all out because they were playing on the field. I mean, they were, I mean, you might've been one to play there. I mean, it was that long ago, I remember.
Let's hear the maintenance stuff.
So if it's like a broken door, or something that's gonna cost money to a facility, maybe art in, but if it's something like, the toilet's not flushing, the school maintenance goes over and takes care of that.
So, like, like when you turn it over, tell them you go, you go walk through instead of, so if, if there's something wrong, would you fix that before you hand over to the school or?
Let's say if somebody vandalism comes and kicks in the door, what's our building? We fix, just like at the school, I mean, we wouldn't go over and fix their door during basketball if somebody kicked it in, so. But if it's something where like, the light switch is broken, and they can fix it for peanut, you know, pennies or peanuts or whatever.
So, we could put the flashing back on the damn house?
The what?
The flashing. Was that ever done?
Yeah. Man, the one right there, man, junction, that's their basement, yeah, we done that a couple times.
I didn't know if it was.
I didn't know what you.
Flashing.
Oh, the antenna by Paul. Yeah, so all that gets checked.
Because I just wondered, I know the schools for the city did a good job at the sidewalk and stuff. Would you like that?
We're gonna go over to where that trench is, hopefully that's done and settled now, I mean, we've been over there multiple times. We'll get that all squared away, filled in, seeded before May first, and, yeah, we usually take a lap, and then if there's issues, we usually, it's about two weeks before May first. That gives us two weeks to do any cleanup of the last minute things, if somebody goes.
So is the school board saying that?
They are going to get it. I wanted to make sure you guys were good with it, it'll get sent to the school board.
Does it get sent to the school board?
And then I have a couple of dates for the meeting.
Okay. So I think the only thing that we need, you need to put in there is about the scoreboard.
Yep.
And I added, is that right? If the school removes a scoreboard, the school must replace the scoreboard with an electronic scoreboard.
It isn't just.
But I'm good with everything else. I appreciate the schools, you know, allowing us to use the basketball.
And this is just for a year, then?
So basically, there was no end to it, other than it expires on the thirty-first of each year unless changes are requested by the city, or automatically renewed May first and ends on the thirty-first of each year unless changes are requested by the city or the school, and the parties agree to meet annually in March to go over the agreement each year, which is what we've done every year. So we just put down what we're doing, essentially. Like I said, the other one, the term was through the twenty-seven, and we didn't think it made sense because it would likely change before then, so.
I think the reason we put it through the twenty-seven when Mom was here is, because we were doing it year to year, and that way the school can fit, school can set them out, how much they need to come up with in here every.
Damn, every budget.
And not, not have to worry about.
No, it was a year twenty-seven. Yeah, twenty-seven, yeah, it was ten years.
Yeah, it was to try to hold, it was to try to hold a budgetary number for the school, so they didn't have to constantly come back and change.
And now, because there was one meeting, we got pretty heated, where we basically said, we'll get it on.
Well, and that's, that's just it. It's a great facility, if we were renting this for a fair market value, it would go for a hell of a lot more than only ten thousand dollars, I would think. And we provide it because it's a service to the school and to our community. That, that's part of what the city's, you know, offering it at a low cost is, and covering some of the costs of the maintenance and some of the other stuff as well. And we can't afford to build a basketball facility that we need for our park and rec program. That's why it's a shared facilities.
Because I mean, before, we were covering everything, I covered, I mean.
Every action. Yeah, it was a bit of a, bit of a money pit. This way, it's at least getting a little bit back, and there's a, they have skin in the game.
I mean, I, I would like to see, for another, you know, place, do it every year, I mean, until we get our sports complex up and going. I mean, I don't, you know, you're visiting this next time, and I mean, I might not even be there. Three of us might not even be up there next time.
Right.
And yeah, of course, we're going to look at the budgetary needs for the school on an annual basis and if ten thousand dollars is not covering it, we'll have another discussion with the school.
So that was the line up that we, we should get by that?
No, the school, the school purchase that? So what's the average cost, the water and electricity a year?
Forty-five.
And what's the other? What's, uh, what's the water? What's the water, how much water do you use?
Well, it depends on the year.
From like last year?
So you figure it's taking about three hundred thousand gallons in a month, easy. So what's their rate at Christina? Do they get a different rate per gallon or anything, so?
So you want the cost at city cost or do you want the?
No, I want to know what they, what.
What we would bill them if that was their own facility?
Yep.
Three dozen, three dozen gallons of water.
Right, so you want to do that? They do the billing, I just produce it.
Yeah, but the electricity, I mean, it says.
Forty-five hundred bucks?
It's what it says in here.
It says forty-five hundred dollars in the contract.
And that, that's what the average was last year, I think it's a, or something like on an average, maybe four, five, four-five hundred.
That's the average over the course of three years. Average annual over the, as studied over three years.
For the first three years of this.
Yes.
So these new lights, it should be even less, right? For LEDs?
Reality, yeah.
You're probably three into that, so thousand bucks, eleven hundred?
Should we, I mean, do, do we actually track it currently or is this just old news? Should we have a reading done before they take possession? Just for our information purposes.
Well, I would assume that would come on a second level, yeah.
For water, I do. Yeah, water.
I thought you read it.
Yeah, we do it every, at the beginning and the end. So we have to account for it. We have to wa, we have to account for that water usage.
Of course.
So.
And I would think we'd have to account for the utilities as well. And this, just the way that the contract reads, it seems, I don't know what three years they study, we don't know if it was with old lights or new lights, I don't know how current this information is to answer Rick's question about what's it cost to the city.
I would say with lights, we wouldn't know because.
They get used by other parties during the same term?
And then you, like, last year, there was, I mean, they, they were using them, maybe, I think, didn't we start off temporary, right? Yeah. So.
Sounds like this is a good year to start reading.
Yes, yeah. Like I said, we can, we can, we have a line item that we pay everything out of, but the electrical though, are those, have one meter for just those lights? Is it the whole park?
Either like all that one and like.
We'll put in new services, upgrade everything.
Is that both baseball and softball?
Yeah. So we put brand new services in both places while we were there, only made sense. Then the, but the stuff's not outside anymore, it's all inside, so they're both in the concession stand.
And we've done that for one year, right? With the new lights?
No.
Not even a full year.
Not even a full year.
Okay, so sounds like we need to start maybe update this number next year in this contract. We can work with this for now?
Yeah, a lot of this we didn't touch because there's a whole lot of things that were agreed on that a lot of people weren't here for, and it's harder to make sense out of it.
Rick, do you have any other questions or?
Well, I'm just seeing what that number is on the water.
Do you have it?
Well, I'm sorry, I thought you guys were, the head of the center's already. I was looking for, I don't honestly know the rates offhand, sorry, I don't do that position anymore, so.
Give it a whirl, Christina. A rough estimate.
He's going to look on that.
The reason I'm asking is because it really is not a no brainer. You get ten thousand dollars from them, you're still paying, you're still paying.
You paid, yeah, you paid a dozen dollars for my water.
Right, so you mean if the water's, so water's this and the electricity's that, you're still making your.
Yeah, it's just.
Because I'm going to tell you, you're not, you're not putting five thousand dollars of maintenance in that place.
In some years, we do though.
Well, if you, you got.
Only if something major happens.
So, so the thing is, is like, there's been way more money put into that park than will ever get out of the school. None of us will, I mean, you, you take a look, we took the diamond four money, we got for the lights and put it into the softball field and the baseball field. So we didn't get to, we didn't get to fix our lights on diamond four. As far as like the insurance one, and then we updated those services. So we have like eighty thousand that we paid out in electrical service, like.
That wasn't covered in the durational stuff?
There was some insurance.
There was, there was, there was insurance, but the insurance covered basically the lights.
Well, I agree, so, but we're just.
So we need to pay for the installation of the lights, installation.
We, we could have very easily taken that one.
It's just a revolving circle, one hand pays the other hand. You know, if I was, it's just simple things, um, maybe you do, one year you, you might put that much money into it, but I can tell you.
Yeah, so, yeah, like one year you might have ten thousand dollars.
I'll bet you, you'll find out that it's going to be a lot with the electricity and stuff, it ain't going to be over ten thousand. Well, if I, it, it'd be on the devil's side of this, if, you know, you sit there and nitpick and nitpick, it's, it's for the, your community is what it's for.
It's all for the same people.
It is for the opposite, for the same people, but you have to realize that the maintenance fee is also, as far as I thought, it, it was repairs, mowing, routine mowing for the park, why they have it, our people are doing that.
Not for basically thousands of.
But the park in general.
And then they should rent the whole park.
Well, I, I mean.
It, it stops at that, uh, at that thing. And you know, it just goes, it just goes like, here's, here's why I view it, it's just like that, that, that water hole, the, or the splashback down there. You know, if you ever go down there and sit, you'll watch people who spend, who spend thousands and thousands of dollars on that day and during the summer you see buses down there from different communities and we're paying for that.
Yep, I, oh, I get it, I get it, that's, that's another one of my gripes, it's like, you should have put a pool in, because my work is, they're breaking it in, yeah.
But I mean, that, that's why I said it was put in.
It doesn't matter, that, at least they're regen, generating revenue and they'll eventually come ahead once it's all paid off.
It does bring people to town.
What are they doing?
Keeping some sperm on these cages.
They don't, they don't patronize, they ain't going to take their little kids and carry the bus out.
No, our water bill is much more expensive, yeah, exactly.
But I've had people come in for a few years in there. But they were a lot older than they were.
I was going to say, most of them, they're over twenty-one.
Okay, what's your, what's your verdict?
So for three hundred thousand gallons, you're about eighteen thousand dollars. Eighteen thousand dollars, huh?
So if you divide that out over, like you do that with three, right? So you're at six thousand a year?
A month.
A month.
For, for the amount of water, now that's max that we've seen go through there. I've seen more and I've seen less, so I don't, I'm not comfortable giving this number out because I don't have the numbers where they used last year, so.
And it's different, are you, we know that.
So make sure that goes in the paper.
I'm not comfortable with this number, do not use this number.
That's strip of water, not sewer.
Yes, that's for extra water usage.
Like this, like the football field is, like last year was astronomical.
So it, I mean, that can go, because I remember when we first started, the, like eight baseball coaches of go, they would go through two hundred thousand gallons of water in two weeks. So, I mean, this is, that's a big, big scary number, I don't want it to be, that's the number I'm saying they're using.
That's also for revenue price, yes, it's not what the city.
It's not cost.
Correct.
It's not cost, so.
Did you guys jack it out, one fifty percent?
I, 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 uh, I think over the course of time.
I'm just kidding, maybe.
I think that's all stuff you need to look at through the course of time, you know, once, once you do the three sixty-five, I think, you know, a lot of people view it as taking money from one pocket, putting it in the other, um, to the taxpayer or what, what have you. I, I don't think the way it's done right now, you, you could ever, I don't know how you would divide an aeration fee, you know, like, because we need it too, so, I mean, you'd be splitting, splitting hairs and we're only doing this over ten thousand dollars, so I don't.
And we're, and we're not paying the school for anything with regard to the.
Right, but the big, and they, and they, they probably would charge, but the big hiccup with that is, is we said, okay, well, if you're going to charge, then we're going to get the responsibility of the gyms and then you would have to go around our schedule. Well, they don't want to do that. So that's, that's the benefit that they get. The five thousand dollar rent fee, correct me if I'm wrong, Grayden, was, was the money that we could recoup if we rented it out during the summer to like fire softball and, all those, for tournaments, right? And, and basically we had the rights to it. So that's kind of a loss. The five thousand maintenance, to be honest with you, there was probably a time where we weren't doing five thousand dollars of the maintenance. Here, the last three years, we've done quite a bit. So I don't think there's a, because they, they want to know, they want an itemized thing. Well, I brought up three pieces of paper and we've got probably sixty thousand dollars worth of repairs, but we, you know, it's, it's, it's long-term repair, you know, new, new electrical system is once every lifetime, you know, whatever.
Yeah, amortize that over its life and it's.
So it boils down to not a lot of money. Yeah, we put the sidewalk in, you know, we did have the sprinkler malfunction, but other than that, we're only talking, you know, the, the fertilizer, um, aeration is probably the biggest things we do, but we also utilize that, so I don't know how you can split it.
Yeah, we're going to have to use that, that.
Because otherwise we use it for soccer and play football for now.
We spent forty minutes on this, this is enough. So just put that in there about the scoreboard and when the school board, when the school board proves this, as long as they don't have any more additions to it or corrections, do I get the council approval, approval to sign it?
So we'll.
For you.
Are you looking for a motion or no?
I asked.
Like I said, yeah.
I, I'm not making a motion, but I'm just saying that's a.
I just did.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, so Mike's made a motion to approve that, including the clause that Doug has described. I will second the motion.
That motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion possible action in reference to downtown reinvestment grant.
All right, Becky or? Anne, you want me to go over this or do you want to talk about it?
She fell asleep.
No, I did not.
I did, for a little bit.
This is something that Brandon and Becky discussed. I don't have the information in front of me, I was curious about what the agenda item was, that's why I'm sitting in my zone tonight.
All right, so, uh, if you look at my notes there, um, I had a discussion with Becky, we, we did not have anyone apply, um, this year for the downtown reinvestment grant. Becky wanted to go over some changes and I think we talked about this in a meeting a while back. She, um, was reworking some of the, um, appropriate reconstruction and rehabilitation treatments, so I finally have that in place, so now I was coming to council to get approval for the whole package to go online. Basically, the changes are, um, it's kind of having this revolving period, so there's not just a one-time application. So that way if somebody missed the deadline and there are still funds there, uh, we wouldn't have to wait a whole year to do it. We moved the exterior cost of coverage from fifty percent to the city, we cover sixty percent and moved the amount from five thousand to ten thousand. And then they increased the interior from twenty-five percent to fifty percent and would cover five thousand as opposed to twenty-five hundred. Uh, the total amount that's budgeted is, and these are TIP funds, is still twenty thousand. And the thought with the increase was because of the construction costs have increased and, uh, for somebody to, to really do a project, um, they felt that twenty-five hundred or five thousand wasn't quite enough to incentivize somebody to fix up a downtown building if it was a bigger project, so.
All right, twenty, so this is twenty thousand dollars that comes out of TIP, right?
Correct, available.
So we, I'd say we, we as business owners, could we use that money to pay for half of the sidewalk?
Anne, you're on that committee, have they ever used this for sidewalks before? Is the purpose of it?
This is, Brandon, this is a city grant.
Yeah.
It's administered by the city.
Yeah.
The Lisbon Historic Preservation Commission only serves as a consultant to the city on this grant, on the administration of the grant, and we are only involved if, um, it is a, um, if there is an issue or, um, a recommendation needed regarding Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation of Buildings in a downtown historic district.
You're, so you're.
But I think if, I think if you go back and look at your guidelines, um, I, I think that this, that grant program was intended, um, for buildings.
That's mine.
And not, not for anything outside of a building. I mean, the facade of a building or the rear of a building or the roof of a building, but, um, not signs or sidewalks or street lamps, anything along that line.
All right, that makes sense, according to what it says on here.
Thank you. And I know that they have approved concrete before, but it was business related, so.
Structural.
Yeah. I don't know if you have any thoughts, I know this was presented once before, um, but now that we just kind of talked about, uh, but now that she has those documents ready to go, we'd like to get this ready.
Oh, this would start July one?
Yes.
We can see how that goes and then the following year.
And I do have interest from two people currently that are at least inquiring on it.
It looks like one person could walk away with fifteen to the twenty thousand.
Well, I, I think the only time they've done that is, um, if they were the only ones that applied, yeah.
That's the point, yeah, that that's, you know, seems to be the max, ten, ten outside, five inside.
Right.
Well, um, yeah, I make a motion to approve this as it reads and, uh, put it online.
I second that motion.
So thi, this is, we're adding some things to those, right?
As far as change the.
We're changing what's.
Change the values.
What's our other one, what our other one was, we're just, we're not adding more money?
No.
No, it's twenty thousand. We just increased.
You just changed the per reach.
Yeah, we increased the grant potential, I guess, but staying within twenty thousand, so.
And opened up the deadline, there is no.
There's no deadline.
Deadline.
Funding's gone.
And if this is limited to just budget, I guess every year when we do budget assessments, we could increase or change that, right?
And we just kept.
And this stays the same?
Correct.
Yeah.
But it's going to be a sort of TIP.
True.
Right, yeah.
But we allocate that to budget time.
Which is part of the TIP program, you need to allocate stuff like this to.
Get the funds.
To get the funds, so. Like the Alamo Lot and different things.
I got a motion and a second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, Anne, for that input.
You're welcome.
Discussion possible action in reference to resolution ten, twenty, twenty-three, we will, reallocating downtown reinvestment funds for fiscal year twenty-three.
So at the last meeting, um, we approved the history, Senator Wall, um, as you recall, we were short funds on that. I did reach out to Maggie Spear, uh, Maggie from Spear Financial, um, and discuss with her, um, because there's always been some questions about a city building being eligible for, um, the use of TIP funds. So, and then I also reached out to Ted Nelson from the Department of Management, um, and talked to him about it, and both of them have agreed, this language came from Maggie. I did have Ted go over the language with this and also, um, went over the purpose, and as long as our purposes are the same, he felt comfortable with it. And as long as our purposes are the same, he felt comfortable with it. However, I did go one step further and I'm waiting for um Bond Council to get back to me. And so what I would ask you to do is if uh Bond Council is okay with this, uh, cause TIP is tricky, I would like to get this approved, which again, we've had nobody apply for that grant this year. Uh, the funds are there, they expired June thirtieth. Uh, I was just trying to get creative for a way to get the money to cover that project in full. Um, it's unlikely that anybody could apply, um, get approved and get the work done and be paid before June, July one. Um, yes, it's probably possible, but I I I don't foresee that happening. Um, so.
They could always apply for next year.
Yeah, so if they applied, you know, we'd have that new, what we just passed available July one, so.
Sounds good.
I was just trying to get creative on a way to allocate the funds.
Yeah, most of them.
And again, this would be based on approval from Bond Council, but they were okay.
Motion to approve as stated with the approval by Bond Council.
Did you get all that, Christina?
Yes.
Motion second?
Second.
I've got a second one. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Set public care for budget, number two for fiscal year twenty-three for April twenty-fourth.
This is just for an amendment that we'll need to do to the um our budget for this year. Is there a motion?
Smooth.
Second.
The motion is second to set public care for April twenty-fourth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Chris Bommers, uh, nothing today. City engineer.
He got tied up in a meeting in Wakeberry, just texted me. Um, let's see. They're waiting on Smittles for the well project. Um, and then Eric and myself have been working with Brandon and Becky. I mean, we're gonna put door hangers out on Wednesday to notify people we're starting the next Monday on the third. Um, I just wanna give a touch base that these, um, you could see a boil advisory or a boil order on your door. Um, this is all mandated to the DNR and it's on the the area of impact, so if it's just a couple houses, it would be a boil advisory. Um, which means we advise you to boil your water until we get the sample back saying the water's okay in that area. Um, the boil order is we're telling you, you need to boil your water until we get the samples back, say in the water safety area. This is all mandated to the DNR. It's not anything we're doing that's wrong or harmful. It's just a safety concern. Um, a lot of the Flint, Michigan backlash has been them really hammering on doing this.
I'll tell you, you could be getting the sample.
So, no, so we will be, say we shut down a block and say it's like twelve ounces, I'm just throwing the numbers out there. That would be the boil advisory. At that point, it would be shut down for that day. Um, when we make the connection and it goes live, we pull the, say it's ten o'clock in the morning. So at ten oh ten, I'm pulling a sample and running it down to the lab.
Good.
Okay, that sample gets notified, we're good. At ten fifteen, the following day, it's been over twenty-four hours, I can pull another sample. And then so on the third day, when they call me and tell me that it's okay, then everybody will be be good to go.
So good. We're basically putting water mains on first, second, we're putting on wall?
Washington Street, Market Street, Second Avenue, Jackson Street.
West Market.
West, my west.
School Street.
Part of, part of School Street.
That'll always get new veins?
What?
Will we get new veins?
Yes.
So they're going down like.
No.
Second is the only one all the way through?
Yep.
So um, then we're, when we replace roads, could we chip it down, except for Fourth Avenue, it's gonna be covered in dirt?
Yes.
All right, so it's going down west, West Market. So every driveway, sidewalk and road will be replaced with light material.
Whatever currently is.
Okay.
Or on the side, it has to be.
These trees that are coming down, are we removing this stump?
Yes.
That was in the bin last time.
So they will start grinding those shortly or?
Shortly, I mean, the snow and weather we have, I mean, they're gonna do more harm than good trying to get into the parking now. But yeah, it'll hopefully, we're hoping to have everything out of the way and done before Becky gets in there to where we can have everything seeded back within the.
Is he, is he done digging trees down now?
Uh, no. Uh, the big ones, yes. There's still a couple. You'll see the green X's on them. Those are the ones that are.
Good, thanks for putting green X on mine. They went twenty years.
Any things else to do?
No.
Still there's one.
Uh, we've got the water lines subbed into the new pavilion building that's out there. Hopefully tomorrow we can get sewer in there and then work on everything inside the building, which we get ready for concrete. Um, the only other thing is, is back to that built water. I went back five years ago on an email and their usage was three thousand for those three months.
For those three months?
Yes, so like I said, once again, I'm not comfortable with that eighteen thousand number. That three thousand in an email, I'm more comfortable with, give or take, because of the water usage. So I think that would be more of a solid number to go off, because they probably use three thousand gallons of water a year over there. So that's it.
Any other things for Travis? Barker there.
Oh, I do.
Hold on, Barker.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Have we grinded any of these stumps down?
Yeah, oh.
At some point, point they will be.
Like here in the next few days.
I think you just asked that.
All the trees that were taken down, they'll they'll go back to the stuff, cause the ground is snowing in and the rain, I mean, it's a little bit like crap when they're grinding out, so. Everything they dig down, they'll stop grinding. Okay? Grayden?
Um, I, we start soccer tomorrow, just so everybody knows, there's gonna be a lot of kids running around, starting at five thirty or before. Um, so just be cautious of that. We've got maybe between a hundred and forty and a hundred and fifty kids, women and coaches and families and things like that. Um, we have our Easter event on April eighth at eleven thirty at the city park. Our spring cleanup is April fifteenth for the ball diamonds in the park. Um, so we're just looking for volunteers to help out with that. I've emailed all my travel teams and um, we've got a good turnout, we always do, everybody's pretty good about that.
April fifteenth?
Correct. Eight AM.
Uh, we said, uh, I'll take Christina.
Yes.
We supply donuts and milk to everybody afterwards. Um, and other than that, I'm just trying to get diamonds ready and soccer fields ready and all kinds of other stuff, but.
Any other things for Grayden? Please?
I got nothing.
That's good.
Thank you for moving that car.
You did?
I didn't move it.
Somebody did.
I don't know if you guys seen the the email that Doug sent to us about the police station on Vermont burden? I mean, I need to get time and chance or whatever to go and just look at stuff and.
Construction project?
Yeah.
Yeah. Windows are going in now, so just notice that if you're driving by and uh, probably in the next couple of weeks, they'll be starting to do a lot more tearing up concrete inside and stuff, so it's gonna get crazy. It's gonna get a lot worse before it gets a lot better. Yeah, anytime you want, just give me, get ahold of me and we'll walk you through.
You want?
Uh, did you guys get the reports by chance? So we should have an annual report and then I believe a February report.
How's everything going over there?
What's that?
How's everything going?
Good, good. So we, uh, you guys will actually be getting two of our folks that are moving the town, so two advanced DMCs are moving in.
So how many, how many volunteers you got?
So we're sitting at thirty-nine volunteers and me and probably about thirty-five are active, minimum.
That's, that's awesome.
So, yeah, it's, it's pretty amazing, um, considering the current climate, so.
Any other questions?
All right, chief. Um, been very busy as of late. Uh, several calls going on. Uh, we're averaging um about two a day here as of late, so. Um, also, our new sonar equipment came in, the association purchased that for the boat, and um we'll start this weekend doing some uh prairie burns on set aside acres for um people that have to have that done for their CRP contracts. That's it.
Any other things for the, for chief? City manager.
Um, Alliance is gonna start putting in the electrical on Third Avenue, new extension into the sports complex and down Jefferson Street, so that'll be happening here shortly. Um, once that's, it gets done, then we can do the electrical into our pavilion. Um, we are going to stub electrical to the end of the street, um, so in the event, it'll be on our property, but in the event of future development, it's ready to go.
That's all underground, right?
Correct. Um, they'll also be putting in the above-ground poles. We're gonna try to utilize poles, save some money uh for the street lights and the parking lot lights and utilize, so there'll be a light on each side for the pole, so just trying to get creative with the dollars. Um, joint school board meeting, uh, school superintendent um has requested April twenty-sixth or May third. Both of those are Wednesdays. Does either of those, will one work better than the other?
I would only be able to do the twenty-sixth.
Do the twenty-sixth, I mean.
Sounds like twenty-sixth.
I mean. Good to go over this. If they have any questions about the thing then, can we go over that? I guess I.
Yeah, that's intended to get this to them tomorrow and give the meeting date. She's gonna check with her people, uh, but those are the two dates that we want. Is, is May third a no-go for Sarah, other than Sarah, if last?
I mean, if 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 it all comes down to it, I can find coverage for May third, but as of right now, I have to work at the plaza auction in the kitchen.
Anybody else opposed as a last minute order? So our first choice is twenty-sixth?
Yeah, okay. But yeah, if they get their okay done and I'll let.
All right, and this will be at the school?
The school, correct.
Um, met with YTT, um, they have some issues that they're gonna need to go over with Dave Schmidt out of the sports complex. Um, it appears that the south side is going to be, need to be reseeded, cause that grass did not take. So um, as you remember, it's kind of late in the year when they went out and did it, so we'll be, I'll give you an update on that, but just so you know, that if you go out there and wonder why I don't think we're rolling, probably need to be done, so. Um, Travis gave the update on the building. Um, the guys have been out there, our staff putting in the water lines, they're gonna put the sewer lines in, and then we are hoping in the next week or two, if the old ground rides out to do concrete, we got some volunteers and stuff that we're gonna hopefully knock that out. And then once that's done, they can get back in here and finish the building, so we have to have that in first. Um, I have also scheduled a meeting with a gentleman from Sportsman Solutions in reference to fundraising. Um, it's a commission-based company that is willing to go out side of our local area and give sponsors for things like buildings and the diamonds and the dugouts and all that stuff. Um, they're currently working in Norwalk and um so far in Norwalk, he's around six hundred thousand that's been fundraised. Um, and again, they just go off commission, so they don't get paid unless we do. Um, so I thought it was, uh, he had reached out to me, he's got, they also um have athletes that they schedule tournaments. Is it U triple S A, is that what that's called? Um, and they have over fifteen thousand athletes that they're um, they cover, so. And the, what they can do is if they've worked with us, they know we have the facilities, they can send leagues and tournaments out here to help us get that filled. So I thought it was at least worth the meet and uh see what he has to do. We did reach out, Grayden reached out to Norwalk and they had some pretty good reviews so far, so.
Then you just do one, you say down in Marla Creek.
No, it's Norwalk.
There's so many, cause he contacted me and I gave him Brandon's number. Basically, what it is, is you go out and get sponsors like Pepsi or whatever. You know, Pepsi will donate ten thousand dollars and they might get ten percent of whatever they donate.
And he said, once we get, and I I gotta, we're caught to find our details, but he said, like, if you want a Pepsi or Coke and made that the sole beverage at your facility, he could like guarantee a hundred thousand. So, I mean, it's stuff like that where, and he said if it's, he won't really saturate our market, so let's say if it was something that a local business wanted to give a thousand, you know, their twenty-five percent is their commission. So if it was like a thousand dollars, you know, and somebody wanted to give that and they're taking two hundred and fifty of that, it might deter locally. He says, we really don't even mess with anything under five, so we could solicit that for you and kind of just put it in a package for you to to kind of get the deal. And he wouldn't take anything from that. So it's just little things like that that were interesting to me that um I thought it was at least a meeting. And then if it all goes well, I'll have him do a short presentation at the meeting for you guys and see if it's something you wanna do.
Solid, good. Talking about sponsorships and everything, so when that baseball field goes to put a concession stand in there, you're looking at, there could be a chance for like summer softball for for adults.
Right.
So how would the liquor license, how would they rent that?
So you could do it one of two ways. If you probably want, that's why the parking wreck did that association. So the thought would be the parking wreck potentially run that as their fundraiser or for get funds and they would have it, similar to how the fire department did with their fundraising. Um, it's, that's just one, one option. Um, I'm sure somebody could come in and maybe say, hey, I, you know, I'll give you ten thousand for the year, let me post, you know, I'll run the concession, you know, or you could do a percentage or two. There's many different ways that people do it. Um, but I think.
No, I'm thinking as, you know, when the, we do get the baseball fields, softball fields, and fight and complete it and take itself beer out of there. I mean, you don't think about it, but you, they do, metal light and Budweiser do fight. I mean, if one of them can get in there and they can only sell Budweiser products or metal light products, I mean, you can, they'll pay each other change then.
Yeah. So there's all different kind of avenues to go down, but like I said, I thought it was uh worth the meeting. Also, um, I've been working with Grayden on fundraising ideas, um, different ideas like um having sponsors for the sidewalk going in, we're getting engraved, uh, bricks on the, you know, those would be for bigger, bigger sponsors. Small fandom sponsors would be engraving the brick on the new concession stand on the cinder block one, which would be the the second one we built. Um, kind of similar how the school did that wall, uh, stuff like that where um, you know, just get creative for that, so. Um, obviously, his board will probably come up with other fundraisers too, but those are just some of the things he's been working on.
And if any of you guys can take a fundraiser, just do it and we can all agree about it.
Um, one thing I wanna mention for the water project and the trees, um, all the trees that were removed are city trees. We did the best we could to stay ahead of it by letting the homeowners know. Some thought it was the greatest day ever, some probably tore down their house, but um, just know that this had to be done. There's no way around it. We put the water main in the parking, so then that way it saves taxpayers money later, so when the water main breaks, we're tearing up the parking, not the street, so. Um, and if you have a request, you have a tree going out or go down, if you have a request for a tree, just let us know and we'll try to put that light tree back or the one that you want. Um, some people said, no, no, I don't want any trees, so. Um, some people said, no, I don't, I don't want any trees, so it's both sides of the spectrum, but just know that, um, we tried to do the best we can. And one thing I told with Travis is I really wanna make, push the communication with the residents on the water shut offs and the advisories, just so, you know, we kinda overkill it, um, in a way, so that we don't have any issues. Um, been working with nuisances, um, I've also worked with EC Con, there's a grant out there, um, that they're working with residents, um, that have uratio damage, that may need low to moderate income thresholds. So I have directed a couple of residents toward there, I know of one that's been approved.
Thanks.
Um, so if there's anybody else, I have tried to call a couple others and haven't really been able to get through. So if you know of somebody, um, that might need that, please let me know. Uh, spoke with Randy Williams, actually I met him down here, he's the contractor for R and W for the history center. Um, he did take the sample to paint the other day and I spoke to him for a while. His plan is to come around April fifteenth, he wants to make sure that the weather is warm enough for do, to do the stripping, um, so you'll see him down there at that time. Um, also spoke to Greg Buttress and he is planning to come around middle of April as well, and that'll be doing the sidewalks, which we approved at the last meeting, that's it all. Um, the budget is now completed for the second time. Uh, Christine, how much, forty-nine thousand less that came?
Yes.
So that'll be affecting the general fund. Um, we do have a decent amount that shouldn't affect anybody's budget, but just so you know, um, the general fund will be tight, um, next year until this all kinda levels off. Um, and with the completed budget, the taxes are gonna go down by point oh six percent. So not a lot, but. Do what it is. And that is all I have, I have to answer any questions you have.
Um, when they do, when Craig does the thing where you don't park the trucks?
Uh, we'll work that out, um, most likely, I'll maybe reach out to the federated church, um.
You, but probably seven days, we'll be all back in there.
Well, yeah, I don't know. He's gonna do, I do, I do know he's gonna do half of it and then come back and do the other. Um, but I'm hoping that we can get the big trucks, um, inside, you know, if we have a little one to park out here, um, the boat and that, that type of stuff, but. Um, yeah, it's gonna be a little challenging, so we'll figure it out.
Uh, Sandy, Brandon? I did have something for you, Travis. When they, when the school puts on chemicals, do you get a copy of what they put on in?
Uh, normally when they do it, it goes through the same company we use, so they know he's not putting too much on it. We try to use the same company both times, so for us and them, so.
I'll fix it for you, I'll give you.
Six inches.
Well, man, boy, you pull a lot of weight on that.
So highways, highways, no highways are sex.
It'll be, uh, rebarred.
And every time you put a piece, so what they say is, you add a piece of rebar, it's like adding an inch of concrete.
I assume we have none out there.
I would venture there's probably some in some of it and none in a lot of it.
They're falling off the truck going by. This broke up pretty bad.
So we get the concrete blocks up for the entrance on whatever street that is.
Yeah, for seventy-three, seventy.
We'll clean those up.
Uh, no, they'll come down eventually for, for open street.
Why?
I don't know.
I mean, I don't, I, the reason I'm asking that is they're gonna have to reseed the west side there. I mean, there isn't really any reason for anybody to have to be out there, I mean, there's no, even any cider practice or, or anything out there.
We can leave it shut too, I don't.
Cause I mean, I'm, I just, I just know how I was when I was sixteen. You know? I mean, could we get it up and going, I mean, I don't really see the need to open that.
We can leave, yeah, we can leave it shut, I mean, I'm of the belief that if they wanna do it, they're gonna figure out, but.
But it might be two or one of them.
I think we can, yeah, at least through the, get a good establishment of grass out there and right now they, it would do some damage.
Well, they wanna get out.
Yeah.
I mean, if they go in there now, they're staying. It's pretty cheap. It's pretty wet. As I was about to say.
I thought, look, when I walked through there today and I got from the shop, I.
I think it does.
I'm gonna ask you, I thought it looked greener, did you?
Yeah, it's, it's coming, but it's just not.
It is green enough, but.
Yeah, it's just not.
No.
Not athletic field quality.
No. But I was surprised to see that.
Hey, anybody else for anybody? Sarah?
Um, I don't really have a whole lot, I was just gonna say with the weather, um, getting nicer, obviously the kids are gonna be roaming, um, so just keep your eye out and be safe and.
Jeff?
Uh, Southeastland's looking for volunteers for the gardens that raise produce for the food pantry. So contact Southeastland if you're interested in that. Uh, the friends in the Lisbon library are having their annual trivia contest, uh, April fifteenth at Gwen's. Gwen will have a special buffet, so if you're interested in that, call the library and get your name on there, we only have room for so many people. And, uh, if you wanna eat at the buffet at Gwen's, call ahead, so she'll have enough food. That's all I have.
Bert?
Um, I just wanna send out prayers to, uh, the people of Nashville today. Six people died in the school shooting, seems to be a, uh, common thing these past few weeks. Um, I'm sure you got your stuff ready to go, all trained, right? It's just a, just a very sad day and you just never know, you know, it's always a thing, you, you talk about this stuff, it'll never happen here, but, you know, I, I'm a firm believer, it's, you can't never see it's when it's gonna happen. So.
Although we're not about to use it, but.
Excellent, gentlemen.
It was a Christian school.
I have anything additional?
I did ask you, you know?
No, no, I don't. No matter what you're talking, you just.
I don't have anything. Christina? I don't think I read the, there's a.
Me neither.